In front of us and they're represented by Attorney Chin. So this is for a common visual license, new manager. Recall the paperwork in order?
Yes, also a transfer of the all alcohol liquor license, yes.
This is for the Royal Booter in Depot Street. So with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Chin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Attorney Russell Chin, Chin Law Firm in Quincy. I'm representing Peter Lynn and Grace Huang. They are applying for, as Mr. Filoni mentioned, CV license as well as transfer of liquor license. They have significant experience running restaurants. They have several restaurants, as indicated in the experience documentation. They're significant sized restaurants, Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse in Braintree and one in Riviere, as well as a Utaka Restaurant in Riviere. They both have their tips certification training as well. They have become very familiar with the rules and regulations regarding licensed alcohol beverage consumption within the town, which I believe are a little bit stricter than the ABCC regulations. And they're here to answer any questions, as am I, that you may have.
Okay. We talked a little bit before the meeting, very interesting. And this is, like I said, a transfer of license to Great Dragon Corporation, doing business as Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse. And the proposed manager is Grace Huang. And Grace, we had talked about, Peter, going to have two or three months of renovation?
Three months.
Three months.
Okay. So when do you think you're looking at, May, June?
June. June 9th.
Right, okay. All right. So you're going to spend some good money there, it's a good location, it's been there for a long time. And you have, as the attorney said, you have the experience. And you're going to be, what's different from your place and some of the other places? Is it the, what did you tell me? Cooking the steak and all that, the stoves?
It's hibachi.
Okay. All right. Good. Good. All right. Let's, everything is in order. The department head review form. So with that, we'll go to the board members to see if any questions or comments. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I understand it, this is going to be a sale of the business with a lease back on the real estate from the present owner, is that correct?
That is correct. It's going to be a lease back, it'll be an option purchase as well.
Okay, that was my question. Yeah, do you know roughly when the option is excisable? Is it within a year, two years, three years?
I think longer than that, it's going to be longer term than that.
Okay.
Or can be exercised.
Okay, all right. But right now, we're looking at basically a lease back from the present owner who owns the real estate. Okay. And as I was looking, just, you know, briefly at the description of the renovations that you're looking to do, I think it looks very encouraging, very exciting. You're talking about reconfiguring the dining room and the function room for sushi counter, sushi room, four barbecue stations. So it sounds as though that the renovations will be extensive and meaningful. And it's really going to be a different kind of restaurant than what we see there right now, is that correct?
That is correct. And they have experience in this type of restaurant, having operated one in Braintree, right by the South Shore Plaza, within the mall. It's a good sized restaurant there with the teppanyaki, the tables where, you know, eight to 10 people, I believe, can sit down and dine, as well as separate tables.
Great, great. I know these kinds of restaurants are becoming more and more popular. And, you know, the fact that you have experience in these kind of restaurants is great. So let me take this opportunity to welcome you to Milford and wish you all the success with your endeavor. Restaurant work is not easy, it's a lot of hard work, but, you know, you've got the experience, it looks like you've got the background, you've got some nice ideas, so I wish you all the best with it.
Thank you, Brian. Bill?
I don't have any questions as it relates to, you know, certainly the background of the individuals in terms of their experience. Their experience is well documented here, having similar businesses. It is quite different than what is there today. I'm a big fan of Japanese food, having lived there. That probably helped, but no, I'm going to wish you a lot of luck, the apartment heads. None of the department heads have weighed in with any particular concerns. All outstanding taxes are paid on the property, so I don't see any reason why you wouldn't be able to move forward.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Okay, is there a first motion, Brian?
I'll make a motion to transfer the restaurant alcohol license.
Motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed?
Second motion, I believe, is to appoint a new manager.
Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion?
And I'll move to approve the transfer of the common visual license.
Common visual license, okay. Motion by Brian?
Second.
Second by Bill on a common visual license. Any discussion? Not, all in favor? That's unanimous?
I think you need a motion on the pledge also. Is there a pledge on the license?
There wasn't.
No pledge? No pledge, okay.
There's no file.
Okay. Good. So we wish you well. If you have any questions, you can contact our office. And we'd be glad to help you out in any way, any of our department heads need assistance. And if I, one thing we always do, new people, I would, at some point, call the police chief. You could have, you can call our administrator and he can sit down with the police chief and he can tell you some of the things that we've done with some of the other establishments, preventative stuff, when people come in, if there's an issue, a problem, call the police, the department, things like that, okay? Because we want you to be successful and we want you to do well. All right?
Thank you very much.
Attorney Chin, good job.
Just like to thank your administrative staff as well for being very, very helpful to us.
Okay, well, we try to do that. Okay, good luck. Good night.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, next is Applebee's Change of Manager, and we have Mr. Michael Zabel. How are you, Mike?
Good.
Good. This is application, change of manager, Apple New England LLC, doing business as Applebee's, neighborhood Grill and Bar, 91 Main Street. Once again, the department head review form, everything is in order, no outstanding taxes. The occupancy is 164 people, everything is handicap accessible. And everything seems to be in order. And with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. I'm here to just-
Same type of operation?
Absolutely. Been in restaurant management for 10 years, been a general manager for Applebee's for three. I was at the Arvin location before Milford. I got transferred to be closer to home from Cumberland, Rhode Island. You know, just here to get the liquor license transferred to my name.
I think it's been a good place for a long time. I know that we never really received any complaints.
Yeah, it took over a good-
Do a good job with the management, that's most important.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think that the service is good, food is good, so hopefully you'll continue to do a great job.
Absolutely.
So with that, we'll turn it over to Brian.
We saved all our tough questions for you.
Do you have sushi?
So you're the smart one, I think.
Good luck with everything.
Okay, Bill?
No, I would say the same thing that Dean said earlier to the previous applicant. You know, take the time to introduce yourself to the police chief, get to know him and any particulars he might be looking for in terms of notification. This board works hard to make sure that licensed liquor license establishments are not penalized for calling. If they need assistance, it's better that you identify challenging patrons or situations before something gets goofy. And, you know, I would just encourage you to sit down and have a 15-minute discussion with the police chief. It's great ideas, the manager of record.
Consider it done.
Is there a motion of a change of manager?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Change of manager to Michael Joseph Zabel. Any discussion? Not all in favor, opposed, unanimous. All set.
Good luck, welcome to Milford.
Good luck.
All right. Okay, next, Vaughn. Right on the schedule almost, yes?
Do you have a restaurant too?
Water first?
Yes, whatever you-
Are you not talking about a restaurant?
No.
Oh, okay.
Completely changing gears, right?
Yeah. Vaughn is our town engineer, should be talking about projects and the update of the stormwater status. We hired a consultant about a month ago to work with Vaughn, just to make sure we had all the points on paper, anything that we may have missed. And so Vaughn and the consultant, I think, will be able to submit the comments. And then hopefully they'll be adopted, accepted. So with that, Vaughn?
Yeah. There you go, I just noticed.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah. I thought it was a different color for a second.
That looks much better.
Okay.
Okay, so as-
Nice to have you, Vaughn.
Thank you. Thank you for having me back to talk about stormwater some more. As Dino said, we hired Weston and Sampson to help us put together some additional comments in addition to our first letter. And so I'll go through a summary of that and then another brief update on what's going on with the RDA. In your packet, there is the letter that I put together with the comments from Weston and Sampson, which, after our discussion tonight, if there are any comments or changes that need to be made, we can still do them. I have not submitted that letter yet. They are due on Friday. And then the second letter is from Mass Coalition for Water Resources Stewardship. It's their comments to the draft permit, and I thought that the board would be very interested in seeing what those are. So our initial comments were submitted on December 23rd, just to recap. And the, these new comments, which we put together with the help of Weston and Sampson engineers, are due on Friday, the 27th. Mass Coalition has put together a letter, and the 495 partnership will also be submitting comments on behalf of their membership. And we're members of both of those organizations. Bellingham also, in addition to their comments, they sent a letter to state and federal political representatives urging a funding program. And then the last thing that I will talk about is, a couple of weeks ago, CLF and Charles River Watershed filed a notice of intent to sue EPA over the RDA. So they're keeping the pressure on with respect to the RDA. So I'll talk about the comment letter first. There were 37 comments. Some of them are very specific to Milford and some of them are more general. I grouped them into categories for tonight's discussion, and I tried to boil it down as much as possible. The first category that I want to talk about was the water quality sampling issues, especially related to phosphorus, which was our real motivation for hiring an outside consultant to make sure that we covered all our bases. So some of, one of the comments was, there's language in the permit that says discharge shall not be the cause of an exceedance. That's very vague. If the concentrations of phosphorus in the river are exceedingly high already, then a very, very small amount of phosphorus coming out of an outfall in Milford could tip it over that limit that EPA is looking at. So we're asking them to rewrite that part of the permit and change that language. TMDLs, total maximum daily loads, and WLAs, waste load allocations, are not required standards from the Clean Water Act. They're goals. And the way they're referenced in the permit, they are presented as standards, as requirements. So we're asking for that to be changed as well. They brought up again, and then this, there are several comments here that echo what we had already said, but lack of current invalid data, lack of baseline goals, those need to be established before we can really start talking about any kind of numbers. Another comment related to the water quality and phosphorus were, only outfalls with exceedances should be the target of our efforts. We shouldn't be required to continue sampling at outfalls that have been demonstrated to not have an issue. It's a waste, it's a waste of time and money. And the outfall sampling program as it's presented does not have very well-defined parameters, especially with respect to some of the limits for the pollutants that are discussed in the permit. The second category of comments is conflicts with the other regulations or conflicts within the permit itself, especially with respect to timelines. The wet weather screening guidelines don't make sense from an engineering standpoint. There needs to be the, there needs to be some flexibility to address what we're looking for and what the specific site requirements are. For example, depending on what constituent you're looking for, do you want to sample during wet weather, do you want to sample during dry weather? So there is a request for those guidelines to be presented as guidelines, not as requirements. The permit should address practical reductions based on site-specific conditions. Again, you know, how far do you have to chase that last, those last few milligrams per liter of phosphorus if it's not cost-effective or it just can't be done? There is a requirement in the permit to treat one inch of rainfall over the entire area of the site. And this is, this is a problem in the case of developments such as Walden Woods, where we have concentrated the residential development and kept a significant amount of land as conservation land. It doesn't make sense that conservation land is not impervious area. We shouldn't have to size our drainage structures based on that additional area. It should only be the impervious area that we would size our drainage system on. Weston and Sampson also identified the need to really define the following terms, directly connected impervious area, disturbance, illicit discharge, increased discharger, redevelopment, and site. Because the lack of definition of these terms can, could create some problems down the road in terms of interpretation of the permit. Other conflicts in the timeline, the permit conflicts with the iterative BMP approach, best management practice approach, which is try what you, try your best thing that you think is going to work for the site, evaluate it, see how it works, and then build upon that. The permit, the way it's written, wants to see the full 20-year plan right away and doesn't give a lot of flexibility for modifying that plan as you go. Another conflict, the NOI in year one requires elements of the stormwater management plan, which is not due until year two. So components required for the NOI will not be available by the time the NOI is due. Sanitary sewer overflow reporting requirements in the permit are duplicative of the current overflow reporting requirements that are in the wastewater treatment facility permit, the NIPD's permit for the facility. So again, it's another, it's a great example of additional paperwork and money being spent on paperwork and not hard solutions that are going to help actually solve the water quality problem. Illicit discharge, detection and elimination, IDDE milestones, provide a disincentive for communities to be proactive. The longer you wait to actually identify your sources, the more time you buy to resolve those issues. Catchment prioritization is something that is due in year one. It requires the completion of the mapping, which is due in year two. So there's a conflict there. The, there is a requirement for a stormwater pollution prevention plan for each municipal facility. That's redundant and it's burdensome because in most cases, they'll be very similar with some site-specific information added. So rather than have an individual plan for every school, the police station, every fire department, the town hall, to have a general SWIP and then, and then address the specifics for each building within an addendum or an attachment. And then there needs to be, again, more definition about the sampling programs, limiting the number of sampling events. We, you know, if we are doing the IDDE program and we do find hits of bacteria, but we can't figure out where it's coming from, at what point do we stop chasing it? And right now, right now, it's infinite, the way it's written in the permit. The next category that was addressed was the financial burden. Everybody who has written a letter on this has talked about getting financial assistance and removing some of the existing barriers. There are currently grants out there, but they're not available for this type of work. And that needs to change. The water quality benefits are questionable and costly, which that goes to the bullet on the bottom, the efficiency and effectiveness review. There needs to be a cost-benefit analysis done before we jump into starting to make all these improvements. The MS4, the town, should be exempted from further investment if our water quality standards are met at our outfalls, regardless of what's going on in the river. It's not our responsibility to clean up the Charles River. It's our responsibility to not increase the pollution in the Charles River. So if we can demonstrate at our outfalls that we're not contributing to that, then we should not be held responsible for further work. Allowing previous infrastructure inventories to be used, Bellingham is a good example of that. They have a fantastic mapping system that they've put together. We have started doing that, and we don't want to have to start from scratch and do it all over again. If it already exists, there's no need to have to go out and capture all that information again. And then, again, the IDDE program, it's just, it's technically infeasible. It doesn't, it, it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense the way it's written. A best effort approach should be adopted. The next category is the system, system vulnerability factors and the definition of the maximum extent practical. Practical, not ideal, reduction should be pursued. And the system vulnerability factors should not be a one-size-fits-all approach. Right now, it's written that it's based on the age of the system, if it's more than 40 years old, if there's crossing of sewer and drain lines, if the sewers have II problems. And every outfall and every priority catchment has to be sampled. Those, those criteria alone by themselves do not necessarily mean that there's a problem. For example, the crossing of sewer and drain lines, that is, that's in every single roadway in town. Every, every time you have a sewer connection that goes across the road, it probably crosses a drain line. So that's not indicative of a problem. The same with II problems. II stands for infiltration and inflow. That is water getting into the sewer pipes, not water coming out of the sewer pipes. So just because there is an II problem during high groundwater season does not necessarily mean that the water, the dirty water in the pipe is getting back out into the groundwater. And then it's not practical to inventory all municipal properties for BMP locations. Milford's a great example of why that's not practical. There are, we have, we have municipal sites that we know will not be able to infiltrate stormwater because of, because of the bedrock, because of what we know about the site. So to spend extra money on engineering and soil borings and studies, again, is throwing the money at the, at the wrong place. And then development of the BMP should be based on site-specific conditions. So that's, those are the main, that's sort of the overview of the comments from Weston and Sampson. They were good. They, I think they will complement what we've already put in to the EPA. The next, the next thing that I wanted to talk about was, on February 10th, Conservation Law Foundation and Charles River Watershed submitted their notice of intent to sue the EPA. Under the Clean Water Act, they are stating that EPA is negligent because they have not enforced the, they have not enforced imposing permits on direct dischargers who discharge into the Charles River watershed. And this is, it's similar to what was previously discussed. There are some amendments. So the, the previous one was issued, the draft was issued in November 2008. It's based on the Clean Water Act. It addresses specifically phosphorus levels. It, this new one targets properties, one or more acres of impervious area. The old one, or the original one targeted two or more acres, but now it's one or more acre. And there are some categorical exemptions, the, some recreational areas, trailer parks, RV parks are all exempt from this, from the one or more acre of impervious area. Some of the proposed amendments are that the RDA does not apply to federal, state, or municipal properties. So the town is, is covered under the, or will be covered under the MS4 permit. We should not be subject to the RDA in addition to that. That's also a very key proposed amendment because town and state roads and federal roads will also not fall under the RDA. The one acre would include contiguous lots owned by the same owner or contiguous lots that shared a BMP. And they have proposed that the owner of a property must file the NOI, but the operator, if it's different from the owner, may become a co-permitting. So in terms of timeline, what, what this means is, the comment period for the MS4 closes on Friday, the 27th. EPA is still saying it'll take them about a year to incorporate all the comments, respond to all the comments. The final MS4 permit right now, they're still saying it's, it will be effective on July 1st, 2016. No action is expected on the RDA until after that is final, until it is effective. And then, once the RDA, the draft RDA comes out, they, there will be another opportunity to comment on that, and there'll be another round of comments for the RDA.
Vaughn, before we get into questions, I just want to, on behalf of the board, say how fortunate we ought to have you, all the work that this has entailed. I know the work that you've put in, plus doing all the other projects that you do on a daily basis. With the consultant, I'm sure that the comments are a little bit better, a little bit more precise, but I'm sure they would have been just as precise and just as qualitative because of your knowledge and what you've put into this project. So this work is very, very, I mean, that was a 20-minute presentation, but the work and the research and the mathematical equations, the science that goes into it is just, so great job on this.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
There's no question that you, you brought the detail, or the details of this issue to another level. And I can see that in this supplementary comment letter, and then also this, this other letter that you sent us from this Mass Coalition for Water Resources. I guess, you know, from my perspective, because I can't really manage the level of detail that you have the command of, but, you know, from a much broader perspective, I guess my, my question is, you know, what are your thoughts on the level of success that some of these comments may have on the EPA? And then also, I'd like to get into a little bit about the threatened or pending litigation, which we had known about. I mean, the EPA said that years ago, that that was one of the big reasons that was driving this thing, they want to get sued. But, I mean, I guess, you know, from, from folks that you've talked to, you know, how successful do you think that will be on getting this permit to incorporate some, or most or all of, of the commentary that's been put forth?
Well, I think that, that's a good question, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I think-
I know, and I know you don't speak for the EPA, but just to try to get an idea- I know, and I know you don't speak for the EPA, but just to try to get an idea as to, you know, what the thought process is out there from folks in the community, this, this scientific community, you know, traditionally, does the EPA listen to this stuff? Do they, you know, take it seriously? Do they just, you know, you know, push, push ahead regardless of, of the feedback that they've gotten?
Well, there, there has been a very coordinated effort on the MS4 permit this time around, and 495 Partnership and Mass Coalition and Franklin and Bellingham and us and Cambridge and everybody has really been sitting up and paying attention and writing letters. And the more times EPA hears the same comments over and over and over about, we, you know, we question the TMDL, we don't think the TMDL should be a requirement, it's just a guideline, we, you know, think you need to look at your sampling programs, the more they hear those same comments, the more weight they're going to have, the more they're going to have to take them seriously. So I think that's the hope. There are also, I know Mass Coalition is very politically involved. I know Franklin has been very politically involved, too, and, and Bellingham is starting to be in terms of talking to their state and federal representatives and making sure that the politicians understand how onerous this is financially for all the towns involved, and, you know, what a big deal this is in terms of making sure the science is right and making sure that there really is a, a benefit that will be realized.
And, and how do you think, I guess, that dynamic might play out with this, you know, threatened or noticed, you know, litigation from Conservation Law Foundation and also the Charles River Watershed? I, I'm not familiar with the statute. I don't know if this triggers a particular timeline, or if this, this is just a shot across the bow, do you know what I mean? I mean, I know I had heard about this going back a number of years. It seems to have taken another level, or maybe not. Like I said, I'm not familiar with the statutory scheme.
I think they're trying to keep the pressure on.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's their job, to do that. There are three EPA regions in the country that have been sued by environmental organizations for an RDA, and two of them rejected the RDA. Region one, our region, is the only one who has not made a strong commitment one way or the other. So they haven't, they haven't rejected it, but they have, also haven't said, yeah, we think it's a good idea. So that's kind of where things stand.
Okay. And I remember the last meeting or discussion we had on this, Representative Fernandez was here. Unfortunately, no other elected officials were here, which is, I think, a big mistake. But what degree of information has been able to be disseminated, you know, to the new senator, to our congressman, the US senators? Is that anything that these organizations are focusing on, or is that something that we, as a board, should try to double up on?
We, we, as a town, have reached out to those individuals, and these organizations also, 495 Partnership and the Coalition are, also are doing that as well. So the, our, our people in Washington, our people at the State House, know what's going on.
Well, I know John does. I know John Fernandez does, and he's just, you know, done a tremendous job on this particular issue, has worked very hard on it. I don't know if anybody else has. You know what I mean? We've, it seems like we've got a new round of federal officials since the last time, you know, we, we did this. And, of course, we have a new senator, which, you know, I don't know, you know, what's going on on that.
We've had several discussions with Senator Batman, and Rick and I are meeting with him in a, in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Because I wanted to get a little bit of feedback. I know he had mentioned about the state filing litigation against the EPA, so I was very interested to hear, you know, what his thoughts were, what his information is in that regard.
Oh, I thought you had met a couple of weeks ago.
We did, unfortunately, the snowstorm, the senator had to cancel.
Okay.
So it's just, and his next, we are meeting before, I think, next month.
As Brian says, you know, you mentioned the other communities with the political aspects. We started this a long time, the first initial meeting, I think, was in this room. And I remember Congressman Neal...
Meetings in Boston.
Meetings in Boston that you attended. So hopefully, you know, Congressman Kennedy and Senator Moore and, and all the people that we deal with are... Vaughn, have you, have you sent this information to them also as a back...
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
The, the letter from Mass Coalition has gone out. There's this, you can see who they CC'd it to at the end of the letter. I have not sent our letter out, just on the chance that you guys might have some comments.
Okay. I mean, yeah, no, obviously, there's, there's, there's nothing that I could, you know, tell you about the level of detail that you've put together here. It all seems very logical, you know, makes great sense to me, but I'm not the EPA. So, you know, from our perspective, you've given us the ammunition. Now the question is, you know, do you need us to try to use it with some of these federal elected officials or, you know, our state senator?
I, I think that should be our, that should be part of our approach, is, is to start talking with those individuals and make sure that they understand how important this is.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know, may I propose, at this point, and I don't even look for motion, but, you know, if we could discuss the parameters of correspondence at least that maybe Rick could send out...
Sure.
You know, to these individuals outlining some of this information and our extreme concern with this issue. And, and again, I, you know, I would advocate a meeting.
Sure.
You, you referenced the meetings that we had. I thought it was very effective to step EPA, you know, back a couple of steps, and really, I think, brought us to this level where they were, where they were willing to hear additional comment.
Vaughn, you can, you know, work with, with Rick on that. And once the paperwork has gone out, maybe we can schedule something in, you know, March or April, you know, whatever. And, and I think it's effective to have, you know, the meeting in here was very effective. Everybody, almost everybody came. And the people who didn't come, I think Mr. Solazi called the office and spoke to those people in a very nice way. And, and then there were calls, and then I think there was follow-up. So I just think it's important that, you know, even our senators at the, you know, Senator Kerry and, the both senators know what's going on. This is important because the communities, as you've said, you've done a great job, get the bill in the second. You know, here's the information, here's the parameters, here's the areas of comment where there seems to be a difference of opinion. The science isn't practical sometimes, and the cost, I mean, it's just incredible. And they have to know that because...
Right.
You know, you talk about budgets and, and making a, a, a very solid community going to a low-level community is by having this thing pass at the, at the current dollars that we're talking about. So it is dangerous. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vaughn, I appreciate the work that you've done here. With each passing revision, the comments get better, get more detailed, and for that, I appreciate it. You know, I, I want to go over the Massachusetts Coalition of Water Resources stewardship because we may be missing something, too. I'm going to suggest that Jerry look at this document. Because the thrust of the document basically is challenging the EPA's authority to make this level of change. And it, and it has many references to prior judgments by other courts and citations to those in, in establishing that claim. I think it would be important for Jerry to see this before our comments are finalized.
Okay.
Because there may, we may be in a position where, because let me, let me preface it by saying this. I see no greater threat to the community of Milford and its businesses than this EPA regulation that they're about to impose. I think it strikes to the heart of the community's viability and its businesses. I can see businesses moving away from communities that border rivers based on these types of imposition by the EPA. But having said that, there are, again, there are many references questioning the authority of the EPA to do this. And when we look at our total maximum daily loads, we've not exceeded our load limits at any point, have we? I mean, the last time I heard from Mike Centauri...
Not since, not since 2003.
Okay. And, and that was an important distinction that he made at the time. But I want to, I just read something. The permit, in, in one of the references, it talks about the permit neglects to recognize that total maximum daily loads developed from Massachusetts waters are lacking in sound scientific, in sound science, and are instead based on generic models of watershed That's a reference on page five. Again, it makes this reference in this document that the total maximum daily load development process is haphazard and unscientific. The program in Massachusetts is hopelessly flawed in terms of science and public process, and it should not be utilized for the NPDES permitting at all, let alone primary focus of the MS4 permit. It's pretty strong language. "If this protocol is to be used by a regulatory context, its proposals permitted should be subjected to rulemaking, peer review, and scrutinized by others outside of the agency." Yeah, I'd really like to have Jerry look at this. And, and actually, if you recall a few meetings ago, I said this. If, if we were going to challenge the science, that we challenge the science very specifically and, and state very clearly and unambiguously where we think the science is flawed in order to make these kind of broad-sweeping regulations. I'm hoping that with Jerry's review of past cases and case law and their decisions, in addition to discussions with you, that we may be able to make some more direct comments towards their, their proposals. That's not, I'm not suggesting that the, the comments that you and the consultants have come up with are flawed in any way. I just, I, I just think it would be helpful if Jerry got an opportunity to review this before, before our comments come out, so that we can brush up, have one last shot at it. We have four days. And again, if somebody can, if somebody else can find a bigger threat to the community that Jerry's working on, that we shouldn't take his time away from, I think this is worthwhile and a worthwhile effort. So I would include Jerry before documents go out and specifically let him review some of the documents we have in front of us. Now, we've just gotten these. I know they were just produced, so they're fresh off the press.
Right. And that, that letter from the Coalition just arrived today, so...
Yeah. So it's good? It's timely?
Yes.
And we have four days in which to brush up our comments. And I think Jerry may want to look at some of these citations to previous cases and judicial decisions to, in order to frame ours a little differently. Because we may be in a situation where we're joining other communities and possibly providing notice to the EPA that we intend to file suit. I don't know. I don't know where this road is taking us, but I want to make sure all available options are open. And I don't want anything that we say to be misconstrued or misunderstood from the EPA's behalf, that if we simply had, if we simply had some funding at the state level, we'd be happy to institute some of these programs. I don't know if we're there yet.
I don't think we're there yet.
I know we're, well, actually, I know we're not there, right? We're not there because eventually those grants and those dollars dry up, and ultimately, the, the cost of those programs are still borne by the taxpayer and those businesses. And whether that grant that comes through simply delays it by four years and makes it inevitable, it's like many grants that we see as a municipality, right? They, they dry up, and eventually you own the whole burden. And if it was a bad idea to start with, but the grant makes it palatable, I don't want to go in that direction. I just want to say it's a bad idea and why it's a bad idea. And I don't think that, you know, one of the things that I appreciate that you did, among many things, is that you specifically called out all the work that we've done and talked about the work that we've done as a municipality to make sure we have clean water and make sure communities downstream from us have clean water. We're doing an awful lot. I don't think anybody is more sensitive than the town of Milford to realize the impact of clean water, what the impact can be if you don't have clean water over a number of days and weeks. And so when that threat exists, we know about it, we understand it, we take it seriously, we intend to do the right thing. But I think, I think there's still some more that can be done on this document. And I appreciate the clear language that was added into the, to that document that I just read from, and I want to make sure I say Massachusetts Coalition on Water Resource Stewardship, because it's clear and direct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Brian. So Vaughn, thank you. So check with Jerry, do whatever has to be done, get the letters out, and then maybe over the next couple of weeks, work with, work with Rick, and maybe we can get a timetable as far as, you know, having a meeting...
Absolutely.
...in March or April with the...
We should host the meeting.
You know, state, state legislators, federal, Senator Markey, Senator Warren. They may not come, I'm sure they won't come, but they, they'll send somebody, so I think it's important. But you can work with Rick. At least we'll plan it out, anything you think that we should do, you know, put it on a schedule, and, and we'll work towards that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you so much.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Oh, you want to talk about, okay. All right, we can go to the gutters.
Yeah, we could, because Vaughn, he's integral in that also, and then I would appreciate...
Let's go to old business for a second, then we'll go back to...
Just by way of a little background, as the board knows, in this, I believe, the spring of 2013, the original project was billed, bid, which included both replacement of the roof, shingles, aprons, snow guards, gutters, and downspouts, the whole project. The bids unfortunately came in over the appropriated amount, so we scaled back the project and rebid. The reason we did that is the condition of the roof, the condition of the shingles was poor, so we wanted to proceed with that part of the contract before winter. And therefore, that's what we did, we went, replaced the roof. Now, we have now rebid the project to deal with the issue of the gutters, snow guards, roof apron, downspouts, flashing, re-flashing of the tower base, et cetera. It would also include a snow melt system over the three building entrances. We went out to bid, received bids on that. The range of those bids was about $261,000 to $418,800. There is a need for this work to be done. If you've been at Town Hall the past couple of weeks, you may have seen Chief Tuohy over here, unfortunately, with the ladder truck knocking down icicles for us. At times, we had to close the handicapped entrance because of icicles being a danger. So we do feel there is a need. Unfortunately, the appropriation was $265,000. Vaughn, he has redone the calculations, and it indicates that we'll need another $33,100 or approximately $35,000 to proceed with this project with a satisfactory contingency. There is a slight increase in the scope of the work, and unfortunately, the cost of the gutter material, we believe, made the lead cop, excuse me, lead-coated copper has increased over the past year. So I am here, and Vaughn, he can explain it even more fully, but one, to see if we could sponsor an article for the additional money so we could complete the project. And we did receive, the lowest bid was from, I believe, Cape Way Roofing. They have agreed to hold their bid until June 1st to determine whether or not we could appropriate the additional monies. So if the board was so inclined, I would ask that they also award the contract to Cape Way Roofing. Again, subject to their holding the bid to July, uh, June 1st.
Vaughn, would you like to add anything to that?
That, that pretty much sums it up. I have a letter from our designer, Russo Bark, recommending that we award to Cape Way. They've checked all the references, they checked their decam ratings, everything is in order. So if the town would like to proceed, it's, it's disappointing that the bids came in higher than what we expected, but that has been the trend lately in the last year, year and a half. Unfortunately, this, I, I was told by a couple of contractors that this lead-coated copper has, the price has gone through the roof for whatever reason, all of a sudden. But that's what Mass Historic wants us to use on the building. They, I contacted them to see if there was an alternate material that they would let us use, and they said they would let us use zinc-coated copper, but that's actually more expensive.
No.
So we're going to stick with the lead-coated copper. So we're going to stick with the lead coated copper. The thirty-five thousand dollars that we're asking for does include a fairly healthy contingency, just to be safe, because things happen. One of the issues that did come up when we were finalizing the design on this that was never addressed the, the first time this project was bid, was that the paint on the tower is lead-based paint, and we need to replace the flashing around the base of the tower because it's leaking, the current flashing is, is leaking, and so the workers will have to use appropriate protective gear, et cetera, while they're doing that work because it's lead-based paint. I mean, it won't be, you know, a full lead-based paint abatement type situation, but there, it, it is a little more involved than just replacing the flashing. So that's, that's, that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, any questions for Vaughn, Brian?
No, no, I think the memo certainly spells out the evolution of this project and, you know, trying to tackle it, I guess, you know, one, one bit at a time, and this, I think, is the last piece of the puzzle, but, you know, particularly in these last few weeks, if you've gone to town meeting, uh, the Town Hall, rather, you know, it's a very important piece of the puzzle because it's been very, very dangerous around here in terms of the ice and the snow and that sort of thing.
Yeah, no question. Bill, any questions for Vaughn?
No, it's ironic that we're talking about, you know, water control, ice control, snow management on our roof, at the same time so many people are having so much difficulty. I think, I think the community will get it and understand it. At the same time, the uniqueness of this structure and its historic nature puts a little bit greater burden, where if a house was built in nineteen seventy-two, you can virtually use any type of material you want, we're not able to do that, nor should we, by the way, it's not that I would want to. So the evolution, again, is interesting in that it's migrated. You know what I don't remember, though? I have to say this, I don't remember as part of the bid process, the heating of the, over the entranceways.
That was not part of the original.
You're correct, yeah, that's an add.
Not part of the original. We actually installed that at the library, and it's working very well, and so we asked our designer to, to include that in this package.
Can you tell me a little bit about what that is?
It's, it's basically a, a heat tracer wire that melts the snow along the edge of the gutter, so
So in the same way residential?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and if, it's above the gutters?
Yes.
Is it in the gutters as well?
No, it's on, no, it's on, it's on the roof, it's, it's held on with clips, and the one at the library is like an S shape
Yeah, you can see it sometimes, you can see where it's working, you can see
And it, and it has been working very well.
But there's nothing in the gutters, usually, and what I've seen is
No, it's not, they do, there is another approach, putting the heat tape in the gutter.
Because it has nowhere to go.
Right, right.
The gutters are frozen, you can melt all the roof snow you want over the entrance.
Right.
And you're still in a bind, right?
Right. The other, the other aspect of this project that will make a big difference with the icicles is that we're, we're adding snow clips to the apron along the edges of the roof, so that will also help prevent the ice dams in the wintertime.
Okay, I'll, I'll use your judgment with, I'll refer to your judgment because I'm a little bit worried that there isn't anything to make sure that the water is flowing in the gutters. And now, that's usually part of a comprehensive system for snow management and water management protected from freezing. Okay. How about to prevent slides? Is there anything?
Well, the snow clips will do that.
That is, okay.
The snow clips will also prevent the slides.
Can you describe the slides for me?
Well, the, the, the snow clips are basically, we have three rows, we have, we have a copper apron at the edge of the roof, at the eve, and then three rows of staggered snow clips on that copper apron before the roof, the asphalt roof takes over, so that, the co- the combination of the copper apron and the snow clips will help to prevent snow from sliding off the roof.
Okay.
In one big, one big chunk.
One big sheet, okay. All right.
Anything else, Bill?
No, no, thank you.
So the motion, we need, what?
One, would I, to seek the additional funds
How much, thirty-five?
By the way, I'd say thirty-five thousand to complete the project.
Okay. Motion, motion by Brian, second by Bill.
And the second, to award the contract to Cape Way Roofing.
Okay.
The low qualified responsive bidder
Okay.
for the project.
So we'd actually like, I'd like to request that the board signs a notice of intent to award, so that they know that we're going to award them the project contingent upon getting the funds at Town Meeting and
How do we award a contract for which we don't have sufficient funds?
No, it's a, it's, it's an intent to
Just an intent to, I did
It's not a notice to proceed.
I did sit with Jerry to make sure that the process we're following here is, is correct.
So what would you recommend the motion be, Rick?
Yeah.
On that?
The board would agree to sign the notice to intent that's in your packet.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
I think it's the
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Intent to award to Cape Way Roofing.
Okay, motion by Brian. Bill, second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And reviewed by Jerry, so we're good.
Yeah, I, I just
That's unanimous.
Caution, yeah.
Okay. The, you know, while we're talking
Yeah, we'll get them to hold their bids
Sure.
Right, that's all.
Give them some assurance that we're going to go forward with the project if we get the money at Town Meeting.
Okay, and another thing, hopefully, that, you know, this board and you and Rick could look at, when we designed this building with the ramp coming in back in eighty-six, there were many of us that questioned, how, you know, how, how are we gonna, how is the snow going to be taken off the ramp, especially when it goes down in the, like, and that's, like a snake curvature? And also, you know, what's going to happen when things fall off the roof? So at some point, because I think it's a safety, I think it's a safety factor, I know that, you know, Carlos and Paul do a great job, but, you know, it does get icy, and that's the most vulnerable people that come to this building, and also, you know, roof, I mean, snow and icicles and all that, so there might be a way, I don't know if it can be done, I'm sure it could be done, but some type of a, a closure, or like an, an awning that doesn't, would be strong and all that, over the, the entire ramp. Just, I, I think, you know, depending on the, when I take a look at it, I just think that it'd be one, that it could be beneficial to the custodians who have to, who don't have to shovel.
Sure.
And plus, it'll make it a lot safer for people coming in, you know, with wheelchairs or older people and all that, because when that, stuff falls, boy, that's a long way, like Brian and Bill have stayed, so if you could take a look at that in the future, you know? All right, so we got it, we have everything?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Okay, Vaughn, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Have a good, safe trip home. Okay. Okay, this, we'll go to the town administrators' report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items, one, as you know, the heating project, where we have installed heaters here at Town Hall has been complete, the next phase would be a boiler project where we are going to be upgrading the boiler system here. We were going to start that this week or next week, unfortunately, due to the cold weather, we will not be able to begin that work, so we're going to put that project on hold until such time as the weather cooperates or is conducive to beginning that work. Second thing I'd like to bring up, at last meeting, I was asked to speak with the tree warden Chuck Grinow regarding trees, both at the senior center and on Main Street. I did meet with him, he did inform me the trees at the senior center were pruned in the fall of last year, however, he did go look again, and he did indicate to me that he does see some overhanging trees that may be from an adjoining property owner, that tree or trees is mostly decayed and dead, so he recommends we either prune it or remove it, so he'll be looking into that. He also informed me that the trees along Main Street are scheduled to be pruned and cutting of limbs back, et cetera, removal of dead limbs, et cetera, this year, so that will be a priority for him also. Just again, on the snowstorms that we've had in the past couple of weeks, I still want to again commend the highway survey, police, fire chiefs, and the senior custodian and their staffs for their hard work, again, they worked long, difficult hours in difficult conditions, and, and for the most of the comments I've got, they've done a fantastic job, so I just want to commend them again. One last item on the registered marijuana dispensary update, as you know, originally Milford Medicinals was anticipating opening that facility April first of this year. I've been informed by Michael Dundas, a principal of Milford Medicinals, that due to a longer-than-expected wait time for their architectural review process with the state, they will be delayed in opening the facility. He further informed me that the DPH has conducted their site visit and were pleased with the site visit. They anticipate commencing the buildout of the facility in April, that will take approximately four months for the buildout, that is then followed by a four-month first cultivation cycle, so he does not expect the dispensary to open its doors until approximately December first, two thousand and fifteen, so just an update for the board on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, any questions for Rick?
No, that's a big timeline, boy.
Yeah.
That's a big difference.
It's a big difference.
I, I've just been following it, you know, casually in the newspaper, I, it seems that the state's, you know, having some problems with this whole process.
And a number of issues with the process itself, correct?
Bill, any questions for Rick?
No questions for Rick, thank you.
And the old business, anything, Brian?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Bill?
Well, I just want to bring up the IT again, once again, I would say I'd bring it up at each meeting until we were able to execute on at least the plan that I had seen last from Paul, and if we could get a status update, Rick?
Sure, a couple of things have happened, one, the mapping is ongoing at the school system, while the computer is doing that mapping, anticipate completing it hopefully the end of this month in February. The report will take a week to a week and a half to complete and get back to Paul. Obviously, at that point, then we will have a much, much better idea of the system that we have in place and at the high school and the adjoining other schools. That's the first step. I do want to report to the board that, as you know, at your last meeting, you recommended and approved a recommendation regarding adding a technician, I did meet with the personnel board, and they were agreeable with this board and the scheduled starting salary and grade level. Also, the network administrator position was also approved, and again, personnel board, I met with them on two separate occasions last week, and they have agreed to a grade three, step two, starting salary. So I anticipate the new tech being on board March ninth, and I anticipate the network administrator position being filled hopefully by this board at its March ninth meeting. One last thing, if I may, is that I'm told by both Paul and working with Brandon Van Dell, that the ticket system is functioning well, the tickets are down dramatically, as I understand it, approximately about forty to forty-five to fifty tickets outstanding now, when we used to have two or three times that, so hopefully with another technician on board, that can be even reduced more dramatically. That's the status I have at this point.
Okay, I appreciate that, and that hardware, as a result of that, the hardware that Paul anticipated ordering servers, routers, that type of thing, were not ordered yet?
Correct.
Do you see any issue or challenge commitment from the school department ordering that once this mapping is done?
I was told the mapping
Obligated for the, that purpose?
They was told they wanted the mapping to be done for us before they did that.
Okay. All right, so just for the benefit of everybody, I know there's been some confusion, various boards, committees, all of that, the, the IT infrastructure that we're building, it needs to be clear what the strategy is for that, and, and I'll give my impression, and if somebody has a different view, I'm okay with sharing it, because I think it's this type of discussion that gets, gets things brought to light. We're essentially creating a network infrastructure and, and labor force that's going to be able to sustain the system. It is not a workforce that's adequate for all future buildouts, large-scale hardware changes, software, major software changes that might happen, either in payroll or some of the big systems, and so we, we need to be able to make sure that we're communicating not only to Town Meeting, FinCom, school department, anybody, and at least we understand it ourselves, that it's a limited resource budget capable of sustaining, getting the tickets under control, but more importantly, oversight to external resources that may be doing work within our system. Brian, I think you were on the school committee, when we finally decided it was time for a facilities manager, if not for anything else, to make sure that we had some control over the various contractors and oversight, the various contractors that work within the building, there's still contractor need for network services, we still have lots of contracts with various companies for service and software, and we'll maintain those, those aren't going away. I don't know, Rick, I just wanted to make sure, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just want to make sure we're synced up here, so as we go out and socialize the discussion and the plan and the strategy, that we're all talking in the same language. Are, are you comfortable with, with those comments? You see it, anything different, or?
Not at this point, I think we're working on two fronts, one, adding personnel, but more importantly, I think we need to implement the plan for the school, and we need to get going on it as soon as we can. I've had discussions, obviously, with the subcommittee and the FinCom about the need to appropriate funds, obviously, to do that.
Yeah, I just don't want anybody to get the misconception that, you know, we've hired, what, we're working on three people plus the director, and that once we have that in place, we're not going to be using consulting services for IT.
No, 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 we're on, if that's what you're asking
That's exactly what
I'm sorry, we're definitely on board, that there's still going to be a need for the IT consultants, mainly, as I, in my view, for the implementation of the, the hardware, servers, network, infrastructure, bandwidth.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it.
It needs to be done, if, if you're asking me, we're going to rely on our people in-house to do that, some of the work, maybe, but the bulk of the work
Sure.
in my opinion, no.
Sure, in the same way that when we're working, looking at facilities and a boiler's replaced, it isn't the facilities manager going in and changing out the boiler with the custodians.
Large-scale work is done externally.
I, I remember that level of discussion with the, with the very first director who was here, and, and, you know, with the superintendent at that time, when, when this whole thing started, and, you know, you, you weren't here, Rick, at that time, but, you know, the, the crux of it, they were trying to tell us that, you know, consultants would go by the boards, and we're going to be able to do everything in-house, and we're going to save all this money, and, you know, from the limited amount of, of documentation that I saw at that point, it just didn't seem to make sense, and since that point, you know, again, and I raised this at the last meeting also, I don't know if this departmental structure that we're looking at is, is feasible, I, I don't know if this works, you know, sharing the head of the department between this and the school department, I mean, I'm somewhat uncomfortable hearing comments about the schools, things that need to be done at the schools, I don't have that base of knowledge, I certainly don't have that responsibility, nor should I, but if that is somehow retarding the overall development of this particular area in the town, well, that's a problem, so, you know, I don't know, really, if this whole model, I guess, is the correct model to, to be going on.
I guess, Rick, it would be incumbent upon you, of course, as our representative and administrator, to keep the board informed as far as progress, and then if there are any difficulties, or if it ever gets to that point where, well, maybe this present system is not working, we need something else, you have to advise the board.
Sure.
Your recommendation.
Correct.
And you work, you work closely with the school department, you work closely with the superintendent, the subcommittee, but
Yeah, obstacles, things that we can clear the way for.
Right, and people have, and people have to be truthful and put, you know, all the information on the table, and so
Absolutely.
Because if it, we could talk, you know, for the next three or four months, and, you know, by then, hopefully, we will have had a plan, all the pieces will be placed on a piece of paper for planning, planning purposes, not everything, but most of it, but, and then the money, the, the attachment, I, I saw Chairman Shane before the school committee, and he talked about how important IT was, and how everybody's supportive, but they need information, and they want to know what the real number is, and the real number has to be put on the table.
Correct.
For us and for them.
Right.
And at some point, if that's not, you know, succeeding well, going in the right direction, then, then maybe, and I don't, I don't know if that's the right decision, for us to do our own thing and the school department to do their own thing, but if you're working towards something and you never reach at that point, then, then you have to take other steps, and you have to, you know, be faithful to this board and say, hey, it's working, not working, we've tried, we've got to come up with something else.
Yeah, and just to add one more thing, Mr. Chairman, and I've talked about it before, I'd like to just repeat it, you know, for folks that may be listening without a general knowledge of IT and what we're talking about, what we're basically talking about is our computer systems, it's how we pay our bills, it's how It's how we pay our bills, it's how we make payroll, it's how we protect the sensitive information that we have of employees, their passbooks and their routing tickets for payroll, their insurance information, their medical history. There's not a day that goes by, I think you can pick up a paper and see where major corporations were hacked, information was leaked or gotten into. We're trying to make sure that those types of intrusions are prevented or blocked and that we're able to make our payroll and pay our bills. Unfortunately, it's not done with pen and paper any longer. It's done with computerization and servers, routers, and computers, so.
And also for the kids to have the technology at their, at their desks so that they can, you know, do what has to be done, so it doesn't just drag on and drag on because every, if you don't have it, these kids lose out, and how long is it going to be before the next class?
And people may not be aware, even just general telephone systems, the key card access at the schools is, has aspects of security. Telephone systems are now computerized, they're small computers. So, it's all voice-over-IP technology, and everywhere we turn is more technology and more burden on the existing system, which, by the way, has been neglected for a lot of years. Unfortunately, and the reports are available, if anybody wants to read those reports, they should, I'd encourage them to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rick, thank you. On that, now we'll go to a new business. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Do you have a town hall system?
Yes, I am going to recommend that the board award a contract to Ad Tech Systems, Inc., for the audio system for upper town hall. Just by way of brief background, as you know, the appropriation for this was $50,000 at the October 20, 2014, a special town meeting. Myself, Town Engineer Vornie Reese, and Finance Committee member Mike Nicholson, and I researched the type of system needed for town hall. We did review a proposal by Ad Tech Systems. I've kind of outlined some of the highlights in the memo for you. We have had the opportunity to actually hear this system in action on two separate occasions. The system is going to be designed, what they call a double-stack loudspeaker system. It throws sound deeper into the upper town hall, into the balcony areas, and it will provide what they call high-speech intelligibility in the rear of the hall and in the balconies. It includes four-floor pocket mic jacks, two new input plates, four new handheld wireless microphones, and what we think is important, an assisted listening system for the hearing-impaired who may be at town meeting or any other function in the upper town hall. We'll also have a press feed to provide audio to public-access videographers. All the loudspeakers will be amplified by Bose channel amplifier. Again, we've had two demonstrations of this system. I did look at another vendor, had them come in, provide a design or an idea for what they thought would be beneficial to the system. The problem, when we reviewed it and matched it against the Ad Tech system, they were not comparable, number one. And number two, when I asked for a demonstration, they could not provide it to me, which was a little bit of a concern to me. The total contract price from Ad Tech would be $37,477. As I've stated before, Ad Tech is a vendor on the state bid list. I presented a copy of the proposal for the board, and based on that, I would ask the board to vote to award the audio system contract for the upper town hall to Ad Tech Systems, Inc., at that price.
So, I think at first, in a long time, the town meeting members will be able to hear what they're spending money on. And I think for the people hearing impaired, there'll be special devices that they could use, so I think this will go a long way in making town meeting more pleasing to the residents and as far as being able to hear things and whatnot.
Mr. Chairman, just if I might, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion simply because a lot of the equipment that they're going to be using, they're going to be purchased from my company, my employer, so.
Sure. Brian?
Yeah, I had the chance to go to one of the demonstrations last year, and I was very, very impressed with the equipment.
You had the invitation.
Yeah, it was-
Both of you.
But, no, no, it was a very, I thought it was a very good presentation. The individual was there, used all different types of sound and noises, and we walked all around the upper town hall, got a good idea as to the sound projection. So, I'm completely in agreement with this Ad Tech system, and it's nice to note that from the last go-around, the price has gone down about $3,500.
Yes, they did, yeah, we did reduce.
That's a good sign also. So, I'll be glad to make the motion to approve this purchase of the Ad Tech system as proposed.
Motion by Brian, I'll second it in the discussion. Two in favor, one abstained because of possible conflict, as Bill stated. And Rick, the other thing we have to worry about is, now, the second phase would be as far as the computer presentations and all that.
Yes, I'm already looking into that, and this company is also very good at doing that, but we will be looking into that, and, yes, I will, yeah.
Okay, good.
That makes sense, yeah.
We have a little bit of excess appropriation that we could-
That was kind of a thought process, too, yes.
Those roof guns, right? Roof electrical pads, whatever they're called. Okay, next is the fireworks, Rick?
Yeah, we received two bids. I'm going to recommend we award to Atlas Pyrovision Productions out of Jaffrey, New Hampshire. Their bid was $15,800. They met all the bid requirements, and that was the lower of the two bids.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve. Is this the same vendor we've used in the past?
Not last year, but you have used them in the past. Not last year, though.
Motion by Brian.
And that's well within the existing budget, I'll second-
Yes, yeah.
And that should answer. Rick, the only thing I'd ask is that you meet with the president or whatever, and just go over what the town in Milford will be getting, okay? Because it seems to have changed over the past two or three years. Last year just wasn't that good of a show, all right? So, I want to just make sure that, you know, we have $18,000, that, you know, now it's 15, but I don't know what we're getting. So, just make sure you meet with them, okay?
Sure.
All right. You want to talk about the mutual aid agreement that the chief has signed, like?
Yeah, the chief is requesting that a mutual aid agreement between Milford and the Holliston Police Departments be approved by the board. Just briefly, if you look at the first page of the agreement, it's an agreement by the parties to establish a strategic working partnership to address certain public safety concerns, including but not limited to mutual aid for the member police departments, et cetera. They also, in order to do this, they want to have sworn police officers from each department empowered to operate with full police powers, including the power of arrest in the corresponding community. I spoke with the chief briefly on this. He is fully supportive of this. He thinks it would be beneficial. It's a lot of what the towns are doing now, anyway, and this would formalize it, and it also dictates agreements between costs and expenses, powers of the police officers, those types of things. So, he strongly urges the board to approve this mutual aid agreement.
Any questions, Brian?
No, I read this over, I was very impressed with the document. Actually, it seems to make a lot of sense to have a written contract like this. You know, early on, I remember having some cases, OUIs or whatever, and you'll get the out-of-town officer, you know, they pick up the defendant, say, in Milford, Fallamont, to Bellingham. From a defense point of view, it's kind of a nice thing, it gives you a little bit to utilize at a trial. But I think, you know, this kind of an agreement really kind of formalizes that practice. I think it's good for liability reasons, it's obviously good for chain of command. I remember, you know, John Moore, when he was a practicing attorney, had a few cases with John, great guy, and it seems like he's doing a great job over at Holliston as their police chief, so, yeah, I'm fully in support of this.
Two chiefs with legal degrees, huh?
Oh, yeah, well, John, yeah, John practiced for a number of years and then went into police work. But he's a sharp guy. I haven't seen him in a while, but nice guy, yeah.
Bill?
No, it actually struck me to, I wanted to get greater context. I don't have any problem with approving this this evening, but I'm actually supportive of it, I shouldn't say, I don't have a problem, I'm supportive of it. But I'm wondering if we could get some additional context from the police chief. Are there other agreements? How many other agreements do we have or similar in nature? Are they documented this well and this clearly? Is this the first of many in a trend?
Sure.
Maybe there are informal agreements that are now service-level agreements coming to something like this.
I think there might be one or two, but not as comprehensive as that.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I can get that information.
All right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Before we get to other new business-
So, we need a motion.
Just need a motion to approve.
Motion by Brian.
Second?
Second by Bill. Any discussion, or in favor? Before we get to new business, other, Rick, I know at the last meeting that Brian brought up about McDonald's, and that you and the chief, Mr. Balducci and Mr. Spadella met.
Yes, we did have a meeting at the police station. Both individuals from McDonald's were very supportive of whatever the chief had to recommend. They, I believe, just took over the business in September of last year, so they are in the process now of reviewing their hiring practices, reviewing their employees. The chief said to them that he would recommend that officers from the department meet with their, both management and employees, to basically just educate them on what, if anything, can be done to try to recognize when this might be an issue. The chief did indicate to them that he would want them to obviously reach out to them and call them if there were any types of incidents that they felt they would need to be informed of. I found both individuals from McDonald's very willing to accept advice from the chief. They want to run a good, clean, family-oriented establishment, so I thought it was a very, very productive meeting, and again, both individuals, I think, will work diligently to see that this type of incident does not happen and learn how to deal with it to try to prevent it from happening.
It just always surprises me, if the board members hadn't brought it up, then this one wouldn't be done. You would think that management would want to do that, have the training, they're going to have monitors for the bathrooms, just going around. You know, they talk about the illegal activity and all that. It just think that, you would think that they would be proactive as far as doing things to manage and control their own establishment. It doesn't always have to come from the board, so, you know, I think the letter is good, it responds some of the things that we were worried about, and then if it doesn't work as far as the bathrooms, they'll put locks on there and all that. But it just seems very interesting all the time where if the board doesn't, members don't bring something up, then a meeting like this never occurs, and, you know, they're making good money there and all that, and it's incumbent upon them to make it safe, to control the bathrooms, especially if they're seeing syringes all over the place. We'll do something about it, call the police chief. You're correct. Brian?
Yeah, no, in fact, you know, as I pull that correspondence out, I looked in my file. We have letters going back to McDonald's on South Main Street, back to 2005, and a lot of it is similar stuff, 2007. I mean, I almost forgot, you know, a little bit of the level of nonsense that's going on at that place, and, you know, to have that kind of activity at a spot that doesn't even serve alcohol, you know, to me, was just totally unnecessary. I think part of the problem, as I look at these letters, and I didn't realize it until I did, the level of turnover in terms of the management and/or ownership of that McDonald's, I just, I just wasn't aware of that. So, you know, that's, I guess, one aspect, but I was encouraged by this letter because these are some basic, common-sense, simple steps that, as you say, I would imagine that any management of a restaurant would undertake. So, you know, I look forward to these types of incidents stopping at that McDonald's.
Yeah. Any comments?
No, not this time.
Okay. All right. New business, Brian?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one item. I was a little bit disturbed to learn this past week that the Milford National Bank is closing their branch on Main Street, downtown Main Street. The building has been there as long as I can remember, and I think of particular concern is the level of effort that this board and other town committees have put forth in trying to keep the downtown Main Street a very vital and active part of the business community. And of course, I think you'll agree, a bank, even beyond a symbol of economic stability, is a real asset that will keep, you know, businesses there and attract certain businesses, and conversely, the absence of a bank can discourage that type of activity. So, what I would like to do is to ask our finance director to give us recommendations about redepositing the town of Milford funds that currently are held in the Milford National Bank. If the Milford National Bank wants to make that business decision about leaving downtown Main Street, you know, I think that we should have an opportunity to discuss it and perhaps put our money where our mouth is, you know? We should not be rewarding banks that aren't committed to downtown Main Street, particularly when there are three other banks that are committed. You've got Rockland Trust, you've got Milford Federal, and you have Commerce Bank. So, I'd like to ask the finance director to put forth some recommendations. I don't know how much money that the town of Milford has deposited with the Milford National, but I know it's fairly substantial, and I think in terms of policy, we ought to be looking to reward those financial institutions that have made the commitment to a vibrant downtown, a vibrant Main Street. So, I'd like to have Zach put together some recommendations for us about redepositing the town's money in accounts, in banks that are committed to Main Street.
Okay. Before we get to you, Bill. Last week, when I heard it, I had some of the similar sentiments. I did call Kristen Carvalho, and we had a good conversation. She said it was a business decision, they didn't want to do it, but they've been thinking about it for a long time, in that it's the foot traffic, as you know, we have three banks, and that one would be closing, I believe, May 1st, and the other two would remain open. She was, you know, she was very, she was okay. She said she'd be willing to come to a meeting, to talk to the board if we felt that that was necessary. She also, I asked her if she would work with the administrator as far as they want to sell the building, you know, and just, not that we have to get her okay, but just to meet with Rick and just give us an update, what's happening, what are they looking at? And she said she'd be willing to, you know, collaborate with the town as far as what type of business would be useful at that location. I also called Zach, and this is Zach. I go, the main thing is that, you know, it's a business decision, we just have to make sure that our monies are protected and that as far as you're concerned, you're satisfied with the protection if the monies were to stay there, or whatever the case may be. So, Zach is going to give us correspondence. And, you know, it was, matter of fact, just to give a little report on that before we get to Bill, I met with some of the Main Street merchants last week. We had about 13 merchants. I believe five people sent letters or called the administrator's office, and it was, you know, it was, it was an interesting discussion. A lot of things came back from when we did it about 25 years ago, and I'm going to ask Rick to give a complete report either next month or the month after. So, you would have the comments, everything written down, some of the steps that they're recommending, but it's, when you start talking to these merchants, you know, little things like, you know, trash cleanliness, you know, the trees on Main Street as far as, you know, going through the sidewalk. We talked about the foot, the foot traffic, it's just not there. The foot traffic is not, is just not there. We're lucky, we have a lot of, you know, good businesses, specialty shops, some restaurants, banks, as you said, Brian, who want to make it viable, but they talked about some things that, going forward, that, you know, the town has to maybe undertake, and I think we've talked about it before, as far as the community- And I think we've talked about it before, as far as the community development director, um, whether it be part-time, whatever the case may be, um, a grants writer combined with that. But someone has to take the initiative, someone has to advocate for Main Street. Uh, we, they talked about the second and third floors, there are a lot of empty spaces, empty buildings. And that's not conducive to, you know, good business and viability and all that. And, you know, they, they asked me about the, uh, if it's ever gonna be discussed at town meeting about the, uh, people living in those, whether it be one bedroom, whatever the case may be. And I said, well, I says, I, I don't know, but I said, uh, they also said that they would be willing to volunteer in a subcommittee to work with the board, the Chamber of Commerce. Um, it talked about, you know, I think at the last meeting we had, I think Harold Rhodes came in talking about transportation, bringing people to Main Street. They all said, hey, if you could have a, you know, we read in the paper about transportation. If you could ever have a situation where, uh, buses or whatever, the cabs or whatever could bring people from different neighborhoods or senior center and all that, the hospital, into the Main Street area, two or three times a day, that would go a long way because it would increase the foot traffic. So, you know, at some point, and I, I think, Bill, you just mentioned it. We've been very successful with the grants that we received, twelve million. But like everything else, once the grants run out, that's it, the program ends and there's no, no further thought about, uh, maybe appropriating a little bit of money. And money is always difficult, money is always important, always have to have, you know, additional revenue because of all these things that we've talked about, whether it be IT, maybe having a, uh, a community development person part-time. Like Franklin has a very viable and active community development, and I think you can see it now in the Main Street area. They also talked about the earnings that we, we were able to, uh, have a relationship on zero interest loans back fifteen, twenty years ago. Now the earnings are, they're either destroyed, they're old, they're faded, and they often talk about that. So at some point, I think, you know, this board will have to, uh, you know, make some determinations if you really want Main Street. And man, that, and that scares me, scares us when you have empty buildings, empty, uh, places on the second or third floor. It's just not good. And so, um, you know, going forward, these people wanna, you know, work with the board, they wanna work with the town administrator, work with the town planner, uh, and like I said, I'll have Rick put all the minutes, all the, uh, thoughts, comments, recommendations down so at least, you know, the board can see that either next month or in April sometime, okay? But, uh, Bill, do you wanna talk about the, um, National Bank? Any comments on that?
Yeah, I think it's sad to see what's been an institutional icon for so long. I, I think it's representative of a direction that banking itself is going into. Uh, unfortunately, less and less of future generations are walking into brick and mortar banks. They're able to do all their transi- actions online and there's less and less, you know, face-to-face comp, uh, customer service that our generation was used to. Um, and I think some of it is, uh, some of this decision is a response to that type of activity. Um, I don't know all the details that went into it. I wanna be careful though about creating pseudo-policy regarding either where we bank or where our cars are repaired, where we do any business in town. Um, uh, you know, I'd like to think of it as, uh, making the right business decisions. Um, you know, we have to be careful. Uh, we don't always go to the local applicant whenever we fill propositions. We don't always go to the local business when we spend money. Um, so I just wanna be cautious in our approach that, uh, the guidance that we give Zach isn't a knee-jerk reaction to that, that building's closing on Main Street. I want it to be more thoughtful.
Sure, we can get the information. And if, if the board would like her to commit at some point, talk, um, she'd be willing to do it.
Sure, I think a discussion and get a better, deeper level of understanding as to what's driving the business decisions, I think is always helpful.
Yeah, so Rick, let's get the information from Zach, okay?
I'm not sure, what are, what are we getting? What are we specifically asking for Zach?
What, what I would like to see is basically some recommendations from him about relocating the town's funds from a bank that's deserting Main Street to banks that are staying committed to Main Street.
We have about three million dollars on that bank.
Okay, so I mean, you know, whatever the ramifications are now, if we're getting a better deal, better interest rates or whatever, than we would at other banks, you know, that's one thing. I, I don't know that. So I, I'd like to get some information on that and then put it forth to this board to make a decision based upon that.
Yeah, and I think our finance director certainly is very qualified and, um, prudent to give us the information that's best for the community.
Yeah, if we're gonna relook at where we're doing banking and what rates are available and who provides preferable rates, I want that to be part of the discussion, uh, you know, I don't wanna cost the community in a knee-jerk reaction a hundred thousand dollars and, you know.
Let's get the information.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I mean, if all things given equal, I mean, shouldn't we be rewarding the banks that stay committed to Main Street as opposed to one that's abandoning Main Street? I mean, you know, we've, we've had, I mean, we have a group of, of, of very energetic, excited, you know, citizen volunteers that are committed to trying to make Main Street vibrant. You've had the meetings with the downtown merchants, which is, which is great. You have at least three banks that, that are gonna stay there and.
Well, today.
Today.
This could be.
It, it could be, but, you know.
Chasing.
But that's, all we're looking at is today, I mean, you know. So today we know that the Milford National Bank is closing a building without any prospective plans for that building. So to me, you know, it's just a real slap in the face to everyone who has, uh, tried to keep Main Street Downtown District, uh, a vital one.
So we'll get the information, and I think more globally for the both of you, you know, going forward is, you know, looking at the whole thing on, you know, it's nice to get banners and flags and all that, that, that only goes so far. We did that before, but it's, it's everything else that has, has to be done. And I think there is some decision that has to be made where that someone would be the, uh, the focal point for Main Street. You know, you can't afford a full-time person, but there might be something part-time.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if you're talking about downtown partnership, the sense that I got from the, the recent changes in that grant process, um, we, we would have success if we were to, uh, partner with another community. And I think if Milford wants to get back into the downtown partnership grant game, we're gonna have to find a partner, whether it's Franklin, Bellingham, uh, whatever it is. But, you know, I think those grants are going towards partnership favorite, so regional type things. So, you know, that's, that's the approach would have to be taken.
Yeah, I've asked Rick to contact Franklin and Marlboro to ascertain what's going on in their communities because I think Franklin's doing very well. Of course, they have a, they have a staff, uh, three or four people, I believe, a lot more than us, so we don't have any. And, uh, all right, the last item is, um, this lady, I think we all know, Mary Martin. Very conscientious, dedicated, just an ultimate professional, and most importantly, she's a very, very nice person. After twenty-two years, she'll be retiring and, um, I wish she'll accept with great regret.
I don't know of anyone who lives on a more appropriately named street than Mary Martin at Sunnyside Lane. Because I don't know if there's ever a time that I've ever seen Mary where she doesn't smile.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, s- really gonna be missed at town hall. She's a great person and done a great job and, uh, certainly wish her the best in whatever she likes to do.
Move and second it?
Second, great person, again, uh, I wish her all the best.
Yeah, okay, I think, anything else? I think we've covered everything. Uh, we don't have any executive session tonight, so motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, second by Bill. All in favor? Unanimous. Good night.